Let the record show at 6 o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order. Sarah, will you do the roll call, please?
Tom Hardy.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Michael Bush.
Here.
Ronald Schulte.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Need the approval of the agenda.
On Friday, Shaki freaked out and requested that the Beddington Access Road project, item A be removed. I explained that it would have to be a decision that been made since it has the ability to amend the agenda. I explained that they are to come back before the planning commission.
Okay. So we will remove A from the agenda.
Do I make a motion?
Yeah, at the, at the, at the direction of the planning commission, do you want to do anything?
You want to go ahead and do A first and get that one off?
We could do them all at one time.
Okay, okay, well, I'll make the motion then that we delete item A, Beddington Access Road at their request, and then realign the lineup tonight to do B, C, E, H, and I, and then follow up with D, F, G, J, K.
Second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Gant, to realign the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions? Okay, the motion passes. Approval of, we have anybody to speak under the sunshine law? Sir? If you're speaking under the open governmental procedure, not a particular project.
My name is Corey Rodriguez, my address is The one I wanted to talk about, I can give you a picture here, this shows you the intersection of showers lane, where you have showers lane, you have across the road, Elmore Orchard Road, and then to the right Tusculor Pike West. We already have trouble during the rush hour and everything, again, how do this intersection, DOH is by what it, the way it is, we don't get that changed. One thing I'm asking is, is there anything we can do? If you look at both of these pictures, we have a constant issue with people putting signs off that impede your view when you look to the right. In both these pictures I show you, there's cars there, but you can't see them, really. And the problem with the intersection is, if you look to the left, you've got to look at two lanes, and you've got to judge, are those people doing what their turn signal or no turn signal says? Straight across from you on Dell Orchard, you have people that treat the stop sign as a yield sign and never yield the right of way. And now, when you look to the right, my view's blocked, I have to determine, is there cars behind those signs coming up the road 40 miles per hour? I, I mean, I don't know, I don't believe it's a DOH issue, I don't know if it's, I, I don't know who to go to about it.
I can't read who the signs are.
They're for the Tusculor, the beltman, the right down on the right.
Okay, okay. Maybe we can speak to the developer about placing signs in a right-of-way that impedes vision on Tusculor Pike.
I will say Department of Transportation, right, you have a sign in salvage yard, the guy that represents
Go ahead and state your name for the record, please. Okay.
They're not supposed to be in Department of Highway right-of-way.
Why don't you take this, Mr. Seanovich, because this is, this is, I believe, your project, and you could double-check to make sure it's not in the right-of-way.
Dustin will come to that.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can't put campaign signs in the right-of-way.
I know that, Dan, but, yeah. Okay. Approval of the meeting minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goff to approve, did I hear second from you? Second from Mr. Bush, to approve the meeting minutes I submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will begin, we have a lot of public hearings, thanks to Mr. Seanovich's request, we have aligned them. So we'll begin with B, Long John Silver.
The first public hearing tonight, the request for waivers, the project is Long John Silver, filed 2501-036, filed 2409-286. The developers, LJS OPC01, and the engineer, Peter, is located in the Apeken District, tax map six, parcel 1.16. Site is the existing Long John Silver's location at 2035 Edelman Miller Boulevard. The developers proposing the demolition of the existing restaurant and construction of a new 2,224-foot Long John Silver's restaurant. The developers requesting a waiver to section 801.6.2 of the subdivision and land use ordinance, requiring parking areas and drive aisles to be a minimum of eight, all exterior property lines. Existing parking driveway and drive aisles currently approaching to the eight-foot setback. With the proposed redevelopment, the approachment would not exceed the currently present. From a planning and engineering standpoint, the addition of stormwater management and safety movement of traffic throughout the site are more important than providing the eight-foot parking setback. Given the information provided, staff recommends approval of the waiver to section 801.6.2, requiring parking areas and drive aisles to be a minimum of all exterior property.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project? You come forward, please.
Sorry, you mentioned the question of, you know, what's the cause of keeping the Long John Silver? I have no idea, we've got a cold call and I'm doing five of them. Three are in-state and two are in Pennsylvania. I, I kind of ask the same question.
Good for them.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised, but we are working on several of them. This site is a redevelopment of the existing. We are asking for possible building. By a little bit by through area. Question do you have on that?
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the floor. If there's any comments from the public, we'd invite you to come forward and state your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding Long John Silver.
If there is no one, a move to close the public hearing.
Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak. I have a motion of Mr. Goff and second by Mr. Bush to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. And you are going to completely demolish the old one, huh?
Yes.
Bet you'll find some treasures in there. Okay, planning commission members, do you have any questions for Mr. Neal or the staff? If not?
Madam President, I make a motion, we grant waiver for 801.6.2.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush. Second by Mr. Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Good luck with your demolition. Okay, the next public hearing is Grade Road Subdivision.
This is a public hearing for request for concept plan advancement. The project is Grade Road Subdivision, filed 2410-332. The developer is Castlewood Consulting LLC, and the engineer is C.C. Located in the Falling Waters District, tax map six, parcel 25.51. The site's located on Grade Road, approximately one mile east from its intersection with Williams Port Pike. Project proposes for the single-family detached lots on 4.25 acres, served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On January 31st, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith, being the above-mentioned project compliant subdivision ordinance, the concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan stage.
Do we have anyone to represent Grade Road Subdivision? Let the record show that there's no one here to represent the project. Planning commission members are from the public, is there anyone wishes to speak regarding this project from the public?
If there is no one, a move to close the public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak. Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. How about you, planning commission members, do you have questions of the staff?
I have a question, to the extent you know. On the plat, there's a proposed pad, and the historical use of the property appears to be commercial. Is there any indication that that pad would be used for any commercial use?
Well, they were also denied it.
That I can't say, I have never seen. All I know is that it was all residential. There's only 40 trips. Yeah, 40 trips for the A and T's.
What does? I was thinking more with commercial residential uses and setbacks, if this pad site.
They've said it's all residential.
So if, if that pad site were used for something commercial in the future, that would be a non-compliant use?
It would have to be street.
Yeah.
To the gentleman just coming in, we are conducting a public hearing for Grade Road Subdivision. Are you the representative for the project? Okay, you have nothing to speak about it? Okay.
Nothing further, Madam President.
Okay. There's no further questions, then we're ready for a motion.
Make the motion, we accept staff recommendation. Concept plan meets requirements of subdivision ordinance 2024. Set plan to the detailed plan stage.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goff. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll skip now to Rickman Property, public hearing.
This is a public hearing for request for concept plan advancement. The project is Rickman Property, filed 2410-322. The developers Dale and Teresa Rickman Investments LLC, and the engineers Morris and Ricky Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 15, parcel 25.9. This property is located on the west side of Little Georgetown Road, approximately 1,000 feet south of its intersection with McCoys Berry Road. The developers proposing a campground of three sites on 1.77 acres to be served by private well and septic. At the December 2nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted waivers to the following campground requirements. One comfort station of at least one water closet and urinal for males, two closets for females and one sink, shower for sex. Two, screening shall be provided within a 25-foot buffer area along the perimeter of the campground. And three, structures shall not be located within 50 feet of the exterior property line. On February 4th, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith, being the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance, the concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project? Sir? This is a public hearing, do you have questions or comments regarding the project? You're representing the project, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If there's questions or comments regarding this project from the public, now's your opportunity to make those known.
If there is no one, a move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak. I have a motion of Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. Rickman or of the staff?
There are no questions, I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation. Concept plan meets requirements ordinance subdivision 2025.
Second.
Therefore, I make the motion, we advance the concept plan to the detailed plan stage.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, skip now to Patriot FCU, Butler's Crossing.
This is a public hearing for request for concept plan advancement. The project is Patriot Federal Credit Union Butler's Crossing, filed 2501-001. The developers Patriot Federal Credit Union, and the engineers Frederick Seibert and Associates. It's located in the Mill Creek District, tax map six, parcel 55.3. Project's located on the northeast of DeWella Drive and Winchester Avenue intersection, within the Butler's Crossing Commercial Center. The developers proposing a 2,808 square foot bank with a drive thru on 1.48 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On February 10th, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith, being the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance, the concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, good evening, Frederick Engineer.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, your opportunity to make your questions and comments known regarding this project. Please come forward if you have anything you'd like to let the planning commission know about.
If there is no one, a move to close public hearing.
Okay. Let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public, I have a motion of Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Frederick or of the staff?
Madam President, I make a motion that we advance the concept plan to detailed site plan stage.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to advance the project forward to the detailed site plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Willow Glen.
This is a public hearing for request for final plan approval. The project is Willow Glen, section four, locks 96 through 131. Filed 2412-362. The developers, MBWGP, the engineers, Orton LLC. Located in the Mill Creek District, tax map six, parcel 73. Located on Middleway Pike, 0.2 miles southeast of the intersection of Middleway Pike and Derrickstown Road. This project proposes 36 townhouse lots, owns 4.68 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat approval, contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $344,400 even. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Willow Glen, section four? Again, public hearing, questions or comments on this particular project from the public?
If there is no one, a move to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public, I have a motion, Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. McDonald or the staff?
There are no questions, I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation. Final plat meets requirements of the subdivision ordinance 2009. Therefore, I make the motion, final plat approval, contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $344,400. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gant and second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation. And that is to... Oh, I see. Grant final plat approval, contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $344,400. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the aligned agenda, so we'll go back up to Forbes Dental.
This is a public hearing for request for concept plan advancement. The project is Forbes Dental, filed 2412-367. The developer is Davano Forbes, and the engineer is Foxen Associates. Located in the Hennepin District, tax map 41, parcel 45.3. The site's located on the north side of Tavern Road, approximately 0.2 miles east of Rockford Drive. The developers proposing a 168 square foot addition to the existing building for the purpose of a business office. The site's currently served by public water and sewer. At the January 21st, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted the following waivers to the subdivision and land use ordinance. One, reduce the required 50-foot front setback to 33 feet. Two, reduce the required drive aisle width from 24 feet to 22 feet. Side of the existing building and parking setback from 18 feet. West side of the property in 0 feet and east side. On February 3rd, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith, being the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance, concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan stage.
Mr. Seanovich, thank you for aligning the agenda. Very considerate of you. Again, public hearing, questions or comments regarding Forbes Dental?
If there is, if there is no one to speak, I'm going to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, let the record show that there is no one to speak. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's now closed. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Seanovich or the staff?
Mr. Seanovich, is that a sidewalk on the north end that extends the whole width of the parking lot?
Is that immediately north of the building?
Um, yeah, it looks like. Yes. Is that what that is? Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Madam President, I make the motion, we accept staff recommendation. Concept plan meets requirements subdivision ordinance 2025. Therefore, I make the motion, we advance the concept plan to detailed plan stage.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by...
I'll give it to Troy.
Okay.
Okay, second by Mr. Barrett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got it. Okay, and now we're going to go to 2022 Tabler Station.
This is a public hearing for request for concept plan advancement. The project is 2022 Tabler Station LLC, filed 2412-385. The developers 2022 Tabler Station LLC, and the engineers Foxen Associates. It's located in the Arden District, tax map 14, parcels 9.3, 9.4, 9.6, and 9.7. The site's located along the north side of Leardale Farm Lane, north of the intersection of Leardale Farm Lane and Business Park Drive. The developers proposing a commercial flex space facility with two buildings on 14.38 acres to be served by public water and sewer. Building one proposes 60,500 square feet. Building two proposes 80,000 square feet, for a total of 142,500 square feet. Building space, no waivers or exceptions have been requested. On February 4th, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith, being the above-mentioned project compliant subdivision ordinance, concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan stage.
Mr. Seanovich, thank you. Again, public hearing, questions or comments regarding 2022 Tabler Station?
If there is no one, a move to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no comments from the public.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing, second by Mr. Gant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Seanovich?
There are no questions, I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation. Concept plan meets requirements of 2025 ordinance. I'll make the motion, we advance the concept plan to detailed plan stage.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation. And to advance the project forward to the detailed site plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Madam President, I recused from this project when it came through for preliminary plan, sketch plan, because I had a conflict at that point. But I no longer have a conflict, should I recuse again, or just, doesn't matter?
Uh, no. You don't have a current conflict, okay. And this is Spring Mills Commercial, that's the one you're talking about?
Oh, I do have conflict on that one.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was going to Foxtail Mills. I recused.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Gant's leaving the room for Spring Mills Commercial, due to conflict of interest. Okay.
This is a public hearing for request for concept plan advancement. The project is Spring Mills Commercial, remaining planned. Filed 2501-030. The developers Spring Mills Commons LLC, and the engineers Foxen Associates. Located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 14, parcel 1.13. This project's located along the east side of TJ Jackson Drive, approximately 1,000 feet south of Cameron's Mill Road. The developers proposing mini-storage RV parking in a 48,000-square-foot flex-use building on 14.99 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On February 10th, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith, being the above-mentioned project compliant subdivision ordinance, the concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan.
Okay, Mr. Seanovich. Public hearing, questions or comments regarding Spring Mills Commercial?
If there is no one, a move to close public hearing?
Second.
Let the record show there's no one to speak. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Bush, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's now closed. Planning commission members, do you have questions regarding Spring Mills Commercial?
Here now, Madam President, make a motion to advance the concept plan to detailed site plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to advance Spring Mills Commons to the detailed site plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're into Foxtail Mills. Let the record show Mr. Gant is now back in the meeting.
This is a public hearing for request for final plot approval. The project is Foxtail Mills Phase Two, lots 17 through 30, files 2501-015. The developers Thomas Companies LLC and the engineers Foxon Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 17 and 17E, parcels 14.5, 14.6, 11 and 45. Site's located along the north side of Beddington Road, approximately 300 feet of the intersection of Beddington Road and Miss Stacy Drive. The developers proposing 14 townhome lots on 1.07 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plot meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plot approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $2,600 and $800. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Mr. Seanovich, thank you. Public hearing for Foxtail Mills, anyone wish to speak?
If there is no one, a move to close public hearing?
Second.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's now closed. Planning commission members, how about you?
I got a quick question from Mr. Seanovich. I noticed that they did a cut-in to Beddington Road there, probably to tie in some water, tie in some sewer. There's a small concrete pad that was poured where the cut-in came into the road there, and I saw that that's starting to fail somewhat. I'm sure that's just a temporary, that eventually will be cut out and put back in.
That's correct. That work wasn't water line. Water line. Okay. I had to do... Anyways. Those were... So that got concrete received over the middle. Okay. I'm springtime. Thank you, sir.
It did patch that hole when it was in there.
Yeah, I saw it coming in.
Good observation, Mr. Harding.
I drive that road a lot.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'm ready for a motion.
If there are no further questions, I'll make the motion we accept staff recommendation. Grant the final plot approval contingent upon receipt and surety in the amount of $24,652.80.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation. And that is to grant final plot approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $24,652.80. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our last public hearing is Foxtail Mills Phase Five... Oh, Phase Three, sorry.
This is a public hearing for request for final plot approval. The project is Foxtail Mills Phase Three, lots 46, 52, 1 through 91. File is 2501-06. Developers Thomas Companies LLC. It's located, sorry, engineers Foxon Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 17 and 17E, parcels 14.5, 14.6, 11 and 45. This site's located on the north side of Beddington Road, approximately 300 feet east of the intersection of Beddington Road and Miss Stacy Drive. The developers proposing 18 townhome lots on 2.46 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plot approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $4,280. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Okay, Mr. Seanovich. Anyone wish to speak regarding Foxtail Mills Phase Three?
If there is no one, a move to close public hearing?
Let the record show that there's no one to speak. I have a motion by Mr. Goff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's now closed. Planning commission members, how about you? Do you have questions?
There are no questions, I'll make the motion we accept staff recommendation. Grant the final plot approval contingent upon receipt and surety in the amount of $194,280. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Barrett, to accept staff recommendation. And that is to approve final plot approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $194,280. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I do have an update on the... I have some photographs sent to me. I think it was six. I think it was Valerie's one. The signs are... I have a single sign in there.
Are these signs that are in this picture are gone?
They aren't there today. Now, I sent that to the developer of the... The... He explained that I don't want to name names. He was... Especially with another sign. Those are bound to us. My contact is... They might have my...
There are actually companies that subcontract. It would just be a guy with a pickup truck full of signs for multiple different companies, and they go out, put them out on Fridays, and they pull them on Sundays. They're just for the weekend, so... When I saw that, that's when I suspected that that's what that was.
Yeah, so I would just... I really, I couldn't see if I would have passed down what it was. Not a single photo, single sign.
That's reassuring.
I will reach out to that builder though, I'm gonna know about the issue, because we know what subdivision it is, so I'll reach out tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you want to send Mr. Rodriguez a note?
I'll call for you tomorrow.
Okay. All right, do we have anything to update on the comprehensive plan?
Uh, not really, just we're working. We've got everything scheduled, but we're just getting the stuff together, so I'm getting the supplies back. The public list off.
Really? All right. It's an incentive to come, right?
Oh, yeah, Jeff did remind me.
Yeah?
Big thing. They adopted it. So it was just adopted by...
Very good, okay. Sounds like we're moving right along here. Okay, if there's anything planning commission members wishes to bring up, now's your opportunity.
Otherwise, I move to adjourn.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Goff is adjourning at 6:39. Need a second for that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, folks, it's a big public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Seanovich, for letting us align the agenda.